We have three members present, one on the phone, and two absent. Therefore, we have a quorum. We have all had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Can I second them?
Second.
Okay, I second.
You said it.
Okay, oh, all right. So we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. There being none, the motion is approved. We've all had an opportunity to review the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the February 20th, 2024, regular board meeting minutes? Is there a second?
Motion.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the minutes will be approved. Now, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Hilliard. Good evening, everyone. We'll begin with our video highlights reel from the ITV team.
In a community passionate about the future of Jackson Public Schools, a stakeholder session was held at Kirksey Middle School, where attendees provided input to enhance academics at JPS.
Specific training for our district while working on the job in the classroom.
There's due diligence being done, thinking about where we're going and what are the best outcomes we can get for our children.
Something that we could do better as a community is try to really understand what the district does, how it does it, and seeing how we as community people can actually help.
With changes on the horizon for schools within the JPS district, community input is highly valued.
The profile of a graduate and thinking more about workforce development and what that truly is and how to support young people in creating pathways that mean something to them.
We invite you to our next stakeholder session on Thursday, April 11th, at Cardozo Middle School. Your insights are crucial in shaping a plan we can all be proud of. The district-wide job fair held at Kirksey Middle School on March 2nd has introduced some new faces to the district. We appreciate all the applicants who attended, eager to explore opportunities to become part of our award-winning team. Stay tuned for announcements about upcoming job fairs from JPS. Please visit our employment page at jackson.k12.ms.us/employment. JPS hosted a professional development day for educators throughout the district on February 16th. We extend our gratitude to both the participants and the presenters for their active involvement in enhancing our instructional approaches.
I am unstoppable.
In celebration of Read Across America, the JPS Hines Early Learning Collaborative hosted a Read Across Jackson event.
In the clouds, as the wind moves across the sky.
How was your day, summer, sunny, stormy, and sky ex Popole winters?
I'm a great reader. But so are you.
JPS's youngest scholars were immersed in the wonderful world of books, experiencing firsthand how reading ignites the imagination.
This is our first year that we've had Read Across Jackson. This is a precursor to Read Across American Day. Dr. Seuss, it's been an amazing day. It's important, come through Jackson, to read to our scholars. Stop being at our schools. We're doing all kinds of learning activities for them.
Tonight, we're here to honor the accomplishments and the achievements of the most outstanding cadets in the Jackson Public School district.
Each are worthy of the title of Jackson Public Schools' JRTC Cadet of the Year.
JPS JROTC gathered at the Mississippi East Center for an honorary dinner and the announcement of a very special winner.
The Cadet of the Year for school year 2024-25 is Cadet Charles Travis.
I would like to thank all of Callaway, the administration, for allowing me, for taking me in as a person and allowing me to grow. I would like to thank, give special thanks to my JROTC instructors.
JROTC Cadet Charles Travis has been promoted to the rank of Cadet Colonel and will serve as the Brigade Commander for the 2025 school year.
Visit our website at jackson.k12.ms.us. Follow us on Facebook at Jackson Public Schools, on Instagram at JPS Student Voices, on Twitter at JPS District, Comcast, Channels 18 and 19, and YouTube at youtube.com/JPSITV.
Thank you, team. I appreciate those videos and those events being highlighted here. Also appreciate all of the continued work to give our scholars some great experiences and learning. I hate I was not able to make the Read Across JPS event, but I've heard great things about it. And so, just excited that we continue with that. Board members and community members, those who are listening in, I want to start by acknowledging a very serious matter that we want to express our sincere concern around and intentional efforts to better understand and address going forward. As you may know, as I know you know, board members, a loaded firearm was discovered in one of our scholar's backpack at dismissal at Peoples Middle School. And this was on February the 28th. The alert was made quickly to our school officials and campus enforcement was promptly inter-- they promptly intervened, apprehended the young man, and he's been arrested and is facing some serious criminal charges. We definitely want to thank our campus enforcement team, our school leadership and school staff team for quickly, or for acting quickly in this regard. Also want to thank, of course, our partners with Jackson Police Department in helping us to address this, and not just in the moment, but longer term as we continue to beef up our efforts to maintain safety and civility in our schools. While this was incredibly distressing to the school community and beyond that school community across the entire district, I do want to stress that our security efforts, especially this year, have made a huge, huge impact, positive impact, on the level of security in our schools. In no way am I diminishing the importance and the seriousness and the danger in this incident. But I do want to stress for all those who are paying attention that we have seen far fewer weapons in our schools this year. Far fewer, as a result of the various security measures that we're employing, both through technology and humans, our staffing. And so, I want to share that and try to keep it somewhat in focus. I know that it only takes one, and we will not rest until there are none, no weapons, in our schools. And we already have some identified strategies to beef up even further our security. But I don't want it to, this to be something that we hide from. We have to acknowledge that it did occur. We're very distressed by it and working diligently to ensure that it doesn't occur again. And at the same time, we need the help of our parents and community members in this, in the following ways. One, we need parents talking to our parents, loved ones, responsible adults, all of them, talking with scholars about the dangers of guns and weapons in general and the danger that they present to our school communities. And the fact that they're illegal and they carry serious, very serious consequences if you bring them onto campus or if you are caught with them in your possession. In times past, we've had individuals to share that they were holding on to something for someone else. That's, that's not smart. And at the end of the day, anyone caught with them will have some very serious consequences that will likely carry forward with them through the rest of their lives. So that's one. We need our parents and loved ones and other responsible adults in our scholars' lives and children's lives, young people's lives, to talk to them about the dangers of weapons and how they just have no place in their own possession and certainly not in their possession in our schools, in or around our schools. And then, secondly, to encourage our scholars, as what occurred in this most recent case, to very promptly report to school staff if they see something, if they hear something, if they sense something, if there's any indication that a threat could exist in and around our schools, we need our scholars to care enough about their own lives and those around them to say something. And these are things that we're just asking, again, all of the adults in the villages around our scholars to lift these important messages up. We will certainly do our part to try and send these messages more frequently and with all of our scholars, but we need others doing the same. And frankly, checking behind them. It's important that parents are deeply involved in their scholars' spaces and lives and that there's very little opportunity for young people to bring anything to school that they know they should not have in their possession. As we see, and I'll end with this, as we've seen in Michigan, as we are seeing in Michigan, one parent of an individual who brought guns to school and actually harmed others. As I recall, one parent has been found guilty of charges, very serious charges. And the other parent, the father, is apparently on trial now. And so, even our parents and those who are entrusted in supervising their young people are being held accountable in this regard. So it's not as important for me to lift this up. I will not hide from these realities that exist around our school communities. And we're doing more and more and learning and improving our systems, and we need the help of the broader community to help us to keep our schools safe. So I thank any and everyone who's listening and for efforts to address that. All right. Next, I have board members, I want to share that you may have seen that at the suggestion of and encouragement of the JPS Facilities Repurposing Advisory Committee, we issued an RFI, a request for interest, to individuals and groups who might be interested in redeveloping three of our inactive school properties as part of the larger JPS repurposing initiative. And so, of the properties that are currently available, 10 or so properties that are available, plus those that we've, the board has agreed and we've recommended to close at the end of this year, three of them we have identified for a first round of getting some information or determining any interest to see if they might be utilized in one way or another. And if not, these are ones that we're in consideration of demolishing and creating some green space. Lifting this up, one, because we're glad to have put this information out, we have gotten some interest, limited interest, about these three buildings, which is what we anticipated. But we also got lots of interest, written interest, about several other properties. So as we move through this first round and then start to lift up and create some formal opportunities for folks to express their interest about other properties, we're excited to be moving this forward and to be getting some public discourse around them. We have a repurposing committee meeting this Thursday, where we will review the interests that we've had. And there's even been some follow-up conversation with those who reached out to us about these three properties in particular, and those properties being French, Woodville Heights, and Baker. And so, we'll share that information with the repurposing committee, have more discourse about, discussion about these properties, and prepare to bring some recommendations potentially to the board at the next possible board meeting about these properties. We'll also continue with more rounds of properties being issued for whether it's a request for interest or a full-on RFP, request for proposals, if folks or entities have a clear sense of what they'd like to do with those properties. So just wanted to share with you that there's some movement, there's some really intentional movement. We wanted to try to focus on some properties and not just all of them that are out there to see where we could likely get some more, more steady or rapid reaction and disposition for those properties. So, of course, if individuals want more information, and you'll see here on the screen, more information about the properties that are available or the process for signaling their interest in those properties, they can go to our website at www.jackson.k12.ms.us. And I believe it's under, can you navigate back? I believe it's under the About Us tab that they'll find JPS Repurposing Initiative. So go to our website, and on the landing page, I believe it's the About Us tab, where they will find the repurposing page. Is that correct? Yes.
I'm told it's correct.
Yes, About Us, JPS Repurposing Initiative. All right. So again, just go to our website, www.jackson.k12.ms.us. And from there, you can navigate to About Us and JPS Repurposing Initiative. All right, board members. And lastly, I know you all know that our Excellence for All, the strategic plan, for our current strategic plan, which is sunsetting in June of this year. We've been in discussion with various stakeholders about the repurpose, oh shucks, about the strategic plan and refreshing or revising the strategic plan to ensure that we've got a clearer plan for the next five years of our, our work. A community, we believe that community participation is essential in shaping the future of our next plan and to help us to guide our decision-making. We have already held one session with board members. I was able to do a follow-up session with Mrs. Thompson, as she was not available for the initial board session. So we've had an opportunity for all board members to engage directly in the review of the strategic plan and rethinking the plan and our needs going forward. We have, we held a community session, and some of you were able to attend. I know Mr. McGuffey and Dr. Sevak were able to attend that session, I believe, and certainly have had conversation with others about various aspects of our work leading up to and including that. I have committed to utilizing the, what are they? My advisory committees. Last night, we held a parent advisory committee, and I was able to have some conversation with them about the strategic plan and focusing especially on a joyful learning environment and the profile of a JPS graduate. We'll continue those discussions with committee groups, the other committees being our administrator advisory committee, teacher advisory committee, and scholar advisory committee. And again, we'll continue with our parents as well over the next couple of months, just to ensure that they have an opportunity to go a little deeper with us in discussion in smaller group and as representative bodies of the larger stakeholders. So we're excited to be in this conversation. We had thoughtful discussion with those who attended the session this past Thursday about the strategic plan. And we also want to lift up that our comprehensive needs assessment survey is another opportunity for all stakeholders. Even if they don't come to any of our sessions, it's another opportunity for them to share their feedback and input about some very specific aspects of our work and their experiences with Jackson Public Schools. And so, we encourage everyone, all of our stakeholder groups, our community members, all of our parents, scholars, team members, everyone to, to provide, to complete the survey and to provide their feedback in that way. So again, just want to encourage folks to do that. The, the survey is open until March the 11th. Is that Monday? I believe that's Monday, no, Friday. Friday before, so this coming Friday? It's Monday.
Upstream, right.
Yep. Right, thanks, all the smart people who can read the calendar, unlike myself. March the 11th, the survey is closing. And so, want to make sure that people go on and complete the survey. It's really, really important. I hope that people have seen over the last several years our attempt to lift up the learnings, the data that we've gathered from these surveys, and specifically call out areas where, whether it's at a particular school or across the district, areas where we've, we seem to be doing well and areas where folks want to see some more improvement. And so, we'll be using that as another set of data and indicators of some changes that might need to happen in our strategic plan. So just want to encourage folks to complete the survey if they have not as yet. And also want to invite everyone, again, to join us on April 11th at Cardozo Middle School, beginning at 5:30, to the next community forum. It'll be another opportunity for people to really engage with us and engage with one another about various aspects of the plan. That's including the mission and vision statements, our core values, the five commitments that we currently have, strong start, innovative teaching and learning, talented and empowered teams, joyful learning environments and a culture of accountability and excellence, as well as the profile of a JPS graduate. Those are the big chunks, the big pieces, components of our strategic plan. And so, we invite folks to please, 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 help us to make sure that the next plan is as informed as this one was and that it addresses the issues and the needs as we see them collectively. With that, Vice President Hilliard, I'm going to turn the meeting back over to you, unless there are any questions or comments for me.
Thank you. Dr. Green.
Yes, ma'am.
Board members, I've just found out that we lost the connection between Ms. Williams and Mr. Figures, so I don't believe we had a quorum when we adopted the agenda and approved the minutes. So if I might ask that, now we do have a quorum, if you would take those two actions again. So we'll be all legal.
Okay. We're, we have three members present, one on the phone, and two absent. Therefore, we have a quorum. We have an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Motion. Second.
It has been moved and seconded, moved by Mitch. Seconded by Frank. All in favor?
Aye.
No nays, no. There being none, the motion is approved. We have all had an opportunity to review the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the February 20th, 2024, regular board meeting minutes? Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Second. It has been moved and seconded, been moved and seconded by Ms. Figures, seconded by Ms. Mitch. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. No nays, there being none, the motion is approved.
Thank you.
Do we have any participation for public comment?
Board members, we have two persons who've signed to, signed up to address you this evening. One of them will need to hear an executive session. The other one that I will call is Ms. Ebony Rice, who would like to address you on active shooter threats, bomb threats, and credible sources.
Community members who would like to make public comments should email their requests to roswilliams@jacksonk12.ms.us, no later than 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting, or appear in person in the boardroom, no later than 5:15 p.m. the day of the meeting, if anyone signed, if anyone wants to sign up. We will, the expectations for those speaking are as follows. You will, of course, have three minutes for your comments. Attorney Turner will keep up with the minutes. The board believes the public's comments are very important. The board will listen and consider your comments, but we will not respond at this time. If there is an issue that you have not taken to leadership at a particular school or district administration, we encourage you to do so. Board members can be reached at our email addresses on the JPS website. Turner?
Good evening, Dr. Sevak, Dr. Green, other board members, attendees. Just had a few quick questions. The first one is, what is the protocol or proper procedure in the event of a shooter threat or bomb threat? Is there a district-wide policy or is it case by case? And the last question, how is it determined whether a source is credible or not? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have information items only. Ms. Lakeisha Marsha Thomas, Assistant Superintendent, High School Division. It's items A and B.
Great evening. Vice President Hilliard, board members, Dr. Green, our JPS family and friends. Tonight, we will have our school board policy presentation from one of our school board, our student school board representatives, Ms. Eva Dos. She's actually company commander, Captain Eva Dos. And as you can tell by her rank, she is a let four in our JRTC program. She's a senior at Wingfield High School, and she plans to attend Mississippi State University and major in psychology and business. She also wants to serve four years in the Army Reserve. Eva did share that serving on the student school, serving as a student school board representative has been one of her aspirations in high school. And she's here with her mentor and our administrative intern. And if you stand, (noise) Jaci Oliver.
Good evening. How are y'all doing? How y'all doing, everybody?
Good evening.
As you know, my name's Eva Dos. She kind of gave y'all the rundown on who I am already. As you can see, I chose the JPS school board policy on the board member visits to schools. This policy guidelines that each school board member appointed to office after July 1st, 2002, shall spend one full day each school year without compensation in one or more of the district schools. Thank you. Board members appointed to office before July 1st, 2002, shall not be required to meet the requirement of this policy until such time as they are reappointed. The board at their discretion may, as a body, periodically visit schools in the district to determine necessary school improvements. The Mississippi Code sections as follows. This policy is guided by the 2020 Mississippi Code Title 37, as follows. I found this policy interesting because while state legislation guides this policy, I was only able to locate this policy on the JPS website webpage and the Clinton Public Schools webpage. I tried looking for this policy on Madison County, Rankin County, and Heinz County webpages as well. Why this policy, you might ask? As a first-time student school board representative, this policy caught my attention, and I took this presentation as an opportunity to better understand the requirements of the board members. In choosing this policy, I decided to leave with more knowledge of the board members' multiple responsibilities to me, my peers, and my community. Policy benefits and disadvantages. The policy stated one full day shall mean seven clock hours at one or more of the school district campuses. Board members may also make multiple visits in hour increments totaling seven hours. As following, I will be reading some of the policy advantages as well as the policy disadvantages. Visits to schools give the board members a firsthand glimpse and experience to gain valuable insight into the environment in which students' academic curricula, such as mine and my peers', are conducted as we learn and as we grow. Visits conducted by the board members also serve as an opportunity to form relationships with staff, students, and faculty to understand issues the school may face or celebrate successes within the school. Although the policy has positive aspects, such as fostering communication between school board members and the district, there are also potential disadvantages. Time constraints being one of those potential disadvantages. Board members may need assistance to allocate a full day or multiple hours to school visits, especially given their other responsibilities and their commitments. More than seven hours may be, more than seven hours may be required for board members to conduct a full sweep and thorough review of the various schools throughout the district. This disadvantage could lead to visits that are rushed and superficial. What does Wingfield think? I think the board members should inspect what they expect. They should visit the schools more often, and principals and students more, so that everybody knows who they are and what role they play within the district. A survey was conducted at my school amongst students and staff to get their views on the policy as well. We had 105 responses from grades nine through 12, and we asked them some of the following questions as I read to you. Do you know the purpose of your local school board? Forty-three point eight percent said that they did not know the purpose of their local school board, forty-one percent said that they did, and fifteen point two percent said that they may have or may have not known who the board members were. We also asked them, did they know who the board members were? Did they know the purpose of the local school board? I'm sorry, those were the percentages for the purpose, I'm sorry, y'all. We also asked them, did they know who the board members are? This time, we had seventy-four point three percent said that they did not know who the board members are, sixteen point six, sixteen point two said that they did, and nine point five said they may or may not have known. We also asked, had they seen any board members visit our school? Thirty-three point three percent said no, thirty-eight point one percent said yes, and twenty-eight point six percent said that they may or might not have known who board members were. We also asked students, what were some things they would like board members to know about our school? Some students said that they wanted the board members to know that our school is unique in a way that our academics and education are important to us, and we hope that the school can be welcoming to board members as they visit our school. We also had some staff survey results. We also asked the staff the same questions that we asked the students. Do they know who the board members are? We had thirty-seven responses, and forty-three point two percent said that they did not know who board members are, forty-three point two said that they did, and thirteen point five said they may or may not have known. We also asked, had they seen any board members visit our school? We had thirty-seven responses, once again, and forty point five percent said that they had not seen any board members visit our school, and thirty-five point one said that they had, and twenty-four point three said they may or may not have. Again, the may or may not have group, they could either have seen board members, you know, they know what important people look like, just because they don't know your name does not mean that they were not there. We also asked some staff, what are some things they would like the board members to know about our school? One survey result said that Wingfield has smart and dedicated educators who collaborate for the greater good of all students. Our climate is family-oriented, and we have great relationships with our students. We have some very talented athletes that can compete on collegiate and professional levels, one of whom is my peers, Tyler Arington. He is very talented, he has received scholarships in athletics in his performance in track and basketball. We also had a staff survey result to personally congratulate Ms. Thomas as one of the board members she had seen visit Wingfield. Thank you, Ms. Thomas. We also asked some other schools as well, the same questions that we had conducted at Wingfield. We had three responses from Jim Hill, 126 from Forest Hill, and 146 from Callaway, and 93 from Lanier. We asked, did they know the purpose of the local school board? In total, thirty point eight percent said that they did not, forty-one point seven said that they did, and twenty-one point five said that they may or may not have known who the board members and what their purpose were. We asked, did they know who the board members are? We had sixty-two point nine percent said that they did not, sixteen point seven may or may not have, and twenty point four percent said that they did. We also asked those same high schools, had you seen any board members visit your school? Thirty-two point seven said that they did not, thirty-nine point three said that they have, and twenty-eight percent said that they may or may not have. These staff survey results continue amongst the other schools that I presented to you, Callaway, Forest Hill, Lanier, and Provin. Fifty-one point two percent of the staff said that they did not know who board members are, thirty-six point six percent said that they did know who board members were, and twelve point two percent said that they may or may not have known. Had you seen any board members visit your school? Fifty-one point two percent said that they did not, and twenty-two percent said they may or may not have, and twenty-six point eight percent said that they did. After conducting this survey, it was concluded that it is clear that many JPS students need help to better understand the role and the function of the school board. If more visits could be made on behalf of the board members, students could be benefited by learning who they are, by interacting with them. It is excellent that there is a policy that says the school board members should visit their schools. However, the amount of time that is required by board members to visit by the state may not be enough to condol, to conduct thorough visits throughout the school. We also concluded that schools should invite school board members to programs and activities that are taking place in the school, so that they can stay informed on what is taking place in their schools, including successes and celebrations. This way that the students and staff know who the board members are when they are visiting. Some recommendations for the state to enhance this policy is to suggest that board members be allowed to spend more time beyond seven hours visiting schools. This will help give them a deeper understanding of the schools and their role, and help them build a better relationship between board members and the schools. We also would suggest to define purpose for visits. To ensure that these visits are meaningful and contribute to informed decision-making, it is essential to clearly outline their purpose. We also suggest feedback mechanism, feedback mechanism. We suggest implementing a feedback mechanism for school board members to share their observation and experience during the school visits with students, as well as they do staff, so that students could also know in ways they can improve, just as the staff could as well. We also suggest incorporating evaluation criteria, development criteria to assess the impact of board members' visits on decision-making and district improvements after the visits. This could include tracking policy changes, resource allocation, or student outcomes following the visits. Thank you for your time, and that was my project, and I will say if you have any questions or concerns you would like to ask me.
Thank you so very, very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Very comprehensive, thought-provoking, called us on the carpet. All of those things, we appreciate your pointing out those things to us. Are there comments from other board members?
Young lady, I think that was a brilliant policy change. And let me just ask, just for the sake of asking, what do you think about school students serving on the school board?
I think that school students serving on the school board is a great opportunity. Like I said, with the policy that I chose, it provides you with the opportunity to really dig deeper at what y'all are doing, y'all responsibilities. It's way more than just, you know, oh, they have to close the schools down, et cetera, et cetera. It's hard decision-making, y'all have a lot of time that y'all have to direct to more than one places, whether that be your own personal lives, other meetings and events. So, overall, I would just say, a student servant on the school board, if you ever have the opportunity, take it. Because not only would it be good to put on a college application, but you get to receive a lot of information. Attending these meetings has provided me with deeper insight into what goes on to provide education for me and my peers in the community of Jackson.
I, I want to sort of echo what they said about looking at this policy in particular. So, for your information, I came on the board right before the start of this school year, so I hadn't been here long. And I think that one of the biggest parts of, of learning on this job that has occurred besides sitting beside Mr. Figures every, every, every other week, was going on school visits at the beginning of the year. And, and I think you've touched on one of the things that, that I, an observation that I shared, which is, seven hours is nice, but it don't stretch very far, right?
Thank you, yes, sir. Thank you, and, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but coming up here, that was a little bit nerve-wracking for me, because I didn't want to, you know, I know the changes that have been made with the optimization plan, so I didn't want anyone to feel as though I was saying that no one was doing what they supposed to do. Like I said, I know y'all have a lot of responsibilities, but like you said, seven hours is nice, but it may not be enough to stretch.
That's it.
Yes, sir.
You know, I can't, I, I will say, I did come to Wingfield at the beginning of the school year, and it was, it was great to walk around, walked around with the principal, with Dr. Green, with a couple of other board members who were able to come. Ms. Thompson in particular was with us. It, it, you're, you're absolutely right, that being able to observe students in, at different times during the day, in different schools, I got to see different things. And at Wingfield, I remember going into two of the classrooms while the teachers were teaching. Now, it's early in the school year, so a lot of times they're just giving you information at the beginning of the year. But at, at other places, we were there during class change, so we got to see kind of students, you know, how they behave in, in hallways, and thankfully, they behaved really well in the hallways. I, I just think there's a lot to this, and so, I want to ask you, on the recommendations in particular, you, you're an incredibly forceful person, and I like that. That's one of my favorite things. I love seeing students own a little bit of power.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Do you think we should change this policy to require more or to permit more time?
Require more time.
That's what I thought.
Definitely require more time.
That's what I thought, too, ma'am.
Definitely require more time, yes, sir, this is definitely what I mean. You know, like you said, y'all could be coming in and just so happened this day, you know, word and got around, we got some people in the building, you know, act right, so that day you might not be seeing all the disadvantages and everything you really got to be seeing, because, you know, we putting on a show, we see people in suits and dresses and sharp clothes, so we know we got to walk in a straight line. When the bell ring, go to class, so, yes, sir, and it's not only just that, it's just, you know, we have such a negative perspective put onto Jackson Public Schools, and I just feel as though, like I said, peers need to know y'all's jobs, that they need to know that y'all not just against us, you know, y'all with us as well. Other schools need to know that we have great scholars, we have people in the building who are showing up, like Ms. Thompson, coming to schools, visiting, showing up on our side with the optimization plan, up until y'all pushed it as far as y'all did, you know. People need to be informed on that, and more time would give people an opportunity to be informed on the job that y'all are doing, and also give y'all the opportunity to really show people that, hey, we are showing up, hey, we are observing, hey, we are putting in the work, you know?
Let me ask one more, just one more question, because I think in, in all the recommendations, the thing that jumped out at me, well, a couple, that I think are tied together, that jumped out at me really, is the, the defined purpose for visits, like narrowing in as opposed to just saying, we come and, you know, we're going to walk around, it's a big place, right? And having some sort of evaluation or, or response available for board members to leave behind, or I, I would even say for, for students to, to leave for us when we come, when you see us come through, that's a great trigger for people being like, I got, I need to tell, that doing something, right?
And that's exactly what, I'm glad you brought that up, because they give me opportunity. I had, I had been talking about it as me doing this policy, you know, maybe, like I said, school should invite y'all, you know, hey, we having a Black History program, do y'all want to come, doing that Black History program? Hey, you know, here are some of your school board representatives, this is what she does, this is what he does, this is the role they play. If you have any questions about this, go to that person. If you have any questions about that, go to that person, because, because they don't know who they are, who you guys are, and that they're barely seeing you, people are going to think that you're not showing up and that you're not doing your job, when it's the complete opposite, you know what I'm, you know what I'm saying?
I guess, I hear you. All right, so let me ask you this, and this is the question that I want to ask, like kind of tied to those. What are, and I know I'm putting you on the spot, this ain't written out, so you're all right, you're doing a great job as it is. What are some of the things that you want us to come into schools to see? Is it coming into classes to observe, to observe how teachers interact with students? Is it coming into, coming to lunch and hanging out during lunch? Or is it coming to assemblies or sporting events? Or what is it that you want, that you think would have value for us to come and to see?
It would be, we know that you are coming to assess the education and academics, we know you there to see we learning right, you know, the environment straight, you know, this is a classroom worth learning in. But I feel like what would really matter is when you show up with those opportunities to connect with faculty and students. Like I said, those Black History programs, those, those cookouts they might have outside, you know, the homecoming events, you know, just the opportunity where, where, you know, because those are the things that students get excited for, when they're like, oh, we been at school, we been testing, y'all, y'all going to that party in the gym? And, you know, they got the music playing, tone the music down, here are y'all board members, this is what they do. Like I said, have questions about this, go to that person, you know? Show up when it's time to connect, when it's time to grow together as a community. Those are the times that really matter. The times matter as well, showing up for academics and seeing the environment, but the time when we really get to connect, those matter the most, in my opinion.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Dr. Green?
No, you got it, ma'am.
Comment?
Do you want to see if Ms., if Dr. Hairston asks anything?
Oh, yes. She's on.
I'm, I'm on the line, I'm listening.
You, you have any?
Have comments, Dr.?
No, I just really appreciate the young woman's upforce righteousness, as my grandmother would say. That is an excellent idea, and most of us do tend to go during the beginning of the school year. So, I take that under advisement, and will make it a point to visit more of my schools more often throughout the school year, so thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yes, thank you for taking it into consideration.
Ms. Dos, again, I, I, like board members have said, I, I just appreciate your, your thoughtfulness on this, I appreciate the data that you brought, and I think I most appreciate the recommendations and the specificity and thoughtfulness behind the recommendations. Not everyone, but a lot of people can point to something that's broken. Not everyone, but a lot of people can do that. Not everyone, but a lot of people can do that. But where people tend to struggle is, okay, well, how do you fix it? What is it that you would like to see that you think will be better than what you're seeing now? And so I really greatly appreciate that. And as you've heard from the feedback, board members are taking this into consideration. I don't want to belabor this, but there are a couple of things that I'll, I'll share or ask. So one, and this didn't, I don't think this came out as clearly as it could have from these humble individuals, but my sense is that most board members go well beyond the hours visiting schools and school-related activities like what you're sharing there. So I think what's given credit in this policy is what's happening, typically what's happening during the school hours. But board members are often called or asked to attend or know of and do attend some other activities as well. I really appreciate you lifting up, though, the opportunities to connect with community and stakeholders, you know, and all the benefits of that connection, beyond just observing classrooms, et cetera, et cetera. Board members are, this is just a reminder and a blanket statement, our board members are in a governance role, and so their job is to create policy. And their job is not to evaluate teaching and learning. Perhaps by the data or any other indicators, a lack of graduation or dropout rates or bad behavior or what, anything that we can look at to say, hmm, maybe teaching and learning isn't great. But the day-to-day instruction, that's not their job. And so again, I appreciate you lifting up these other opportunities for them to see things and see and get a sense of what's happening in schools. I wonder if, if, if there's a shared understanding and appreciation for the various ways that board members could get a sense of what's happening in a school, whether it's speaking at a graduation ceremony or speaking at, or engaging in some back-to-school event or any of those sorts of things. And so that's something that we'll definitely be supporting board members on, just to make sure that they're clearly plugged. I will say that, and board members, you can correct me if I'm wrong, there's probably a difference in the amount of outreach that you get from school to school. And that's not casting aspersions on anyone, but just depending on what schools have what activities and how much school leaders or teachers or parent leaders or whomever want to have them involved or make sure they are aware of programs, that varies. I mean, it certainly varies for me, even as superintendent. There are some teachers and parent groups and whatnot that are very intentional about inviting me to their thing because they want me to see this or want me to view that. And so that's something I think we can all help across the board to lift up and make sure everyone knows and can plug in to the extent possible. Last thing else I'll just ask or ask you to think about are what could be done to help scholars to better understand what the board does? So for sure, I heard you, and I've mentioned before, the just understanding that so-and-so is on the board, but that doesn't necessarily help you to understand what the board does. And so if you have either now or later, any thoughts on what's reasonable for us to do to help scholars to understand what the board does? Because I would bet many of us probably make a lot of assumptions about that. And we need to not make assumptions.
I feel as though, well, one thing for me personally that I learned to help me better understand, that I would suggest to students like myself as well, is knowing that there are many schools in the wards and that board members are assigned to those schools and those wards, you know. So that is something that I feel will help them to gain a better understanding of the board members and what they do by knowing that piece of information. Because before doing this policy and researching on it, I had not been informed on it. I was not aware of that.
So even in thinking about even in student handbooks and other materials that we share with students, scholars and their families about the leadership at the school, sometimes they will include the superintendent there, perhaps including the board member there as well. I want to think some more, and seriously, this is a very real invitation. I would love your continued thoughts on what, what, I mean, because we can obviously tell people, this is what the board does.
Right.
And maybe we haven't done that or done that enough or clearly enough. We could do that, but I wonder if that's the most effective way. And remember, this is not just our high schools, it's our middle schools and elementaries, even upper elementary as well. So that's just something I think I would love your continued thought partnership on. So it's not just like random information we're sharing, but really helping folks to see at a real level, concrete level.
Right. I understand you. I definitely understand you. And once again, I appreciate the board members for the time that y'all conduct. I actually had a personal interview with my principal, Mr. Smith, and he always told me about the extra time allocated to the side that people don't really get, you know, light shed on. Like you said, that they do show up to events that people need them at, and they show up for unpaid and uncompensated time where they really, you know, put in work to make a difference. Like Ms. Thomas, she was coming in December, still coming to our school, helping us out, you know, being on our side, pushing for us. So I definitely understand what you're saying. It is definitely not going in one ear or the other. And I definitely would like to consider taking more insight into how students could better understand how board members contribute and what their jobs are, more than just saying, hey, these are the board members and this is what they do.
Yeah, and I'm not at all shirking my responsibility in this. I'm owning it. It just sounds like you might have some ideas, so we can, we can talk more on it.
Okay. Well, thank y'all so much. I'm glad y'all gave me y'all time. I enjoy coming up here and sharing my policy that I chose with y'all.
Again, we want to thank you, Ms. Dos, very passionate about it. It's obvious if you put a lot of time, effort into this. Ms. Marsha Thomas, we want to thank you for the assistance that you provide for these young people. So let's give her
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Thomas personally got a prime example of representative setting time aside. She got on the Zoom call with me Sunday in her bed, excuse me for telling her business, y'all. In her bed, giving me pointers, helping me out so much on my project. She really helped me to really dig deep within myself as a senior and as, you know, a young woman to really get my point across. She helped me so, so, so much on really settling my tone, coming across positive and getting y'all to understand me, which I think I did a great job of today.
Cheering you out.
You are, we are in great hands, aren't we? The future, the future.
My goodness.
Ms. Thomas, graduation rates update. Ms. Thomas?
Great evening again. So at this time, you are, we want to take the opportunity to share our most recent graduation rate data. And this is grad rate data that will be for our 23-24 accountability system. Two objectives of the presentation. First, to just to provide an overview of the district's graduation rate. And this is for our graduates of the class of 2023. And also, it will be counted in this year's accountability model. And also just to discuss a few of our improvement efforts around graduation rates and our dropout rates. How is the graduation rate calculated and used for accountability? So just briefly, it's the number of students who graduated four years from our schools with a regular high school diploma and also a state-defined alternate diploma. And these are students that come into our districts four years prior and complete in four years. And these are first-year ninth graders. So once you enter the cohort, you will remain in that cohort. So how's the graduation rate calculated? This is the accountability model for the district. This is a thousand-point model. And if you'll notice, notice the graduation rate is worth 190 points of the district's 1,000 points. And so we did want to share that. So when we get the grad rate, we do multiply that times two in order to get our graduation rate for the model. So looking at our graduation rate trends, this chart starts in 2016, 2017, and goes up to the class of 2023. So our current graduation rate for our class of 2023 is 83.7, which is a minor decline from last year, four tenths of a point decrease from what we had previously with 84.1. Our graduation rate strategic, strategic plan goals, excuse me, was 80%. And we did exceed our strategic plan goal. Our grad rate is 83.7. And just to share our graduation rate trends by schools, you'll notice that we have three of the high schools that had a decrease in their grad rate, three with an increase in grad rate, and one that sustained its current grad rate, and that's Jim Hill. And this is our graduation rate subgroup data. We had two areas or two subgroups that showed improvements in their grad rates, and that's our males. Last year, the grad rate was 79.1. We did improve slightly to 80.3. And then also our grad rate for our Hispanics or our Latino students. Last year was 68.8, and we improved slightly to 69.2. And so if you just go back a second for me. If you'll notice, what is in parentheses is the state's grad rate. Was highlighted in red are the number of scholars that we have in each of those subgroups. So red denotes the count or the number of scholars in that subgroup. Parenthesis represents our state data. Green shows those subgroups that increased, and red denotes no growth with that subgroup from the previous year. Okay, at this time, we will look at our dropout rate data. And first, just to give, just a brief overview of who's considered a dropout. And those are students who have withdrawn or no longer attend school, and we end up having to drop those students. Sometimes we will end up with a coding of students whereabouts unknown because those students are listed as no-shows. A fifth-year student whose graduation cohort is also considered a dropout unless that student re-enrolls. If the student re-enrolls, we can consider that student to be a completer. And lastly, a student who withdraws and pursues a GED option, and that GED program is out of our, is outside of our district. And this is our dropout rate data over the past nine years. And we did see a, an increase in our dropout rate from last year, 14.1 last year to 14.6 this year. And dropout rates by schools. We have four schools that, whose dropout rate increased, I'm sorry, five schools who dropout rate increased, and two dropout rates decreased, and that's Lanier and Mara High School. So at this time, we will discuss, discuss a few of our graduation and dropout prevention strategies. This is just a pictorial representation of what our graduation rate options are. So option one, of course, means our students meet the traditional graduation requirements, all of their course requirements, in addition to end-of-course exams. If students fail to meet option one, these are additional options that they can use to meet grad requirements. For example, option two allows our students to use their ACT scores in lieu of passing an end-of-course, end-of-course exam. As long as they make a 17 in that particular sub-score, that can serve in lieu of an end-of-course exam. And then additionally, we have some other options, including our average scale score of 646 and concordance. We have an E3 Ready campaign that we enacted last year. And our E3 campaign focuses on three areas. That's enrollment, employment, and enlistment. And so what our focus includes is that every student has an option to either choose one, choose all three, choose two. But our goal is that our students are prepared to either enroll in college and meet all of the enrollment criteria, they meet employment criteria, or they meet or and meet enlistment criteria so that at the end of their high school matriculation, they have options. And so we've put some things in place to help them meet some of those goals. So for example, today, which is March 5th, was our JPS ACT day. And all of our scholars in ninth through 12th grade, grades took the ACT, the National ACT today. And so we are so very excited and proud of each of our scholars. They showed up today. They were ready, and we think, and we sent up some encouraging words, just right, we prayed, that they would meet or exceed their ACT goals today. We also offer the ACT Work Keys, which is aligned with their employment goals. So students that score silver on ACT Work Keys, or gold, or platinum on ACT Work Keys, those are career-ready credentials. And so when those students decide that, hey, I'm interested in, you know, part-time jobs that may require additional job-ready credentials, they are ready. We also administer the ASVAB back in October to all of our scholars. And we, we have several administrations of the ASVAB to ensure that our scholars score 36 on ASVAB. And so at the end, students can receive an E3 Ready Stole, which means that you are E3 Ready. We also do graduation tracking by schools, by students. So we know every single student from ninth through 12th grades and where they are on their matriculation to meeting graduation requirements. And that allows us to put supports in place as early as ninth grade. And this is one of our code sheets. We use it to help keep up with our coding because they have so many options. And just to share, since we're talking about graduation, these are our graduation dates for this year. Thursday, May 30th, 2024, and Friday, May 31st, 2024. And these are our commencement times. So if you have any questions about our graduation rate data, I will take those at this time.
Ms. Marshall Thomas, before you take questions, will you say just a little bit about the impact of COVID, the waivers and dropout?
Yes. So in 1920, 2020, the Mississippi Department of Education issued waivers. They issued a lot of waivers, but the most impactful waivers around graduation was around end-of-course exams. So they waived the requirement to meet graduation requirements. So students were not required to pass the end-of-course exams. They had to pass the course, but they were not required to pass the end-of-course exams. And so if you'll notice, across the state, we saw an increase, a very sharp increase in graduation rates because that, that gate had been removed. And so what we're seeing now is a return from the release of those waivers. Graduation rates will begin to now even out. And we should expect to see declines in graduation rates because those waivers are no longer available to scholars. And the dropout rate. So, and so those things go hand in hand. Of course, if the students are not graduating, it does impact the dropout rate. We are monitoring our dropout rate really closely because as long as those students are meeting the course because as long as those students are meeting the course requirements or the number of required credits, and they return, we can count those students as completers if they're just missing end-of-course exams. And so, hopefully, we won't see as sharp an increase in dropout rate as we expect to see in our graduation rates.
And I'll just add quickly. We have also seen, we also saw a huge number of scholars. I've seen estimates somewhere on the order of eight hundred or so scholars who, whose parents signaled to someone at MDE or to us or otherwise that they were homeschooling their scholars. Or scholars that simply did not reemerge after the virtual school and pandemic days and all of that. And so, since then, we and other school districts here in the state and across the country have been working to identify those scholars, to bring them back. And we've seen quite a number, and I don't think we've got a full accounting of this, but quite a number of scholars who've come back with years of instructional gaps, of learning gaps, years, two, three years of gaps. And so, of course, trying to convince them to come back and re-engage, and now I'm sixteen, but I'm sitting in sixth grade, or whatever my situation might be, is tough. Even if they do come back and re-engage, just trying to catch them up to the degree possible and maintain their interest in completing high school gets to be a bit of a challenge. And we've got, I think you all know, we've got a couple of, a few programs intended to help scholars to re-engage, to reprogram, and to hopefully accelerate their learning and credit bearing and catching up through the Fast Track program. And we've also launched our virtual high school, which will help as well. So, several issues still lingering from and the vestiges and impacts of the pandemic that absolutely are impacting what we're seeing with graduation rates and dropout rates, and of course, our resourcing and strategies to try to support those scholars.
And just to add to what Dr. Green is speaking about. So, one of the waivers that we did not receive from the Mississippi Department of Education was around reporting. Each year, we have a reporting deadline of October to report any students that you found. Well, during the period of COVID from twenty to twenty-one, many of the schools were closed, and we were not able to find out where students were. Well, when we started to open back up and get into schools, we found students, but we missed the October deadline because we too were virtual. Many of the other districts were virtual as well across the country because our students were everywhere. But as we started to, you know, look for students and found students, and many of them were enrolled in other schools. But because we missed the October deadline, we were still not able to get those students off of our cohorts. So, they were counted as dropouts.
Is there a certain length of time in terms of, you know, you say you got the dropouts, and the dropout can come back? And is there a certain length of time that they are allowed, you know, that can transpire between that time when they leave and return?
As long as they return the next school year, or if they complete with their required hours, credits, we count those students as completers, but they're still not graduates. It helps us on dropout rates, but it doesn't help us on graduation rates. And you'll see, that's why you see some differences when you add the grad rate and the dropout rate together. It never equals one hundred, simply because some students are not graduates, but they also are not dropouts. They're a completer, and there's no completer rate.
Board members, are there other questions or comments?
Yeah, I mean, I would just love, I think, some of the information that's been provided to us, but for you to just speak on some of the strategies that we've engaged in, maybe on both sides, but I'm thinking more on the grad track, on how we're pulling kids in, and not just in the E-three program, but there are some specifics that I know we've gone to to get more kids across the stage. And I'm even thinking of some of the efforts that were put into summer school completion and all those sorts of things. But I'd love to hear you talk about it.
And grad coaches.
Yep, so we have graduation coaches in all of our high schools, and their main goal is to track, monitor, and support scholars as they get to graduation. And so, a lot of those, most times what we see are scholars that are struggling to pass end-of-course exams. Students that are struggling with attendance and academic performance, we immediately address those. We put graduation plans, attendance plans in place to help support those scholars. We have scholars sometimes who, you know, life has caused them some, you know, some angst. And so, supporting them through a graduation plan where they can see the goal really has been beneficial. And those things, you know, include, you know, tutorials. It includes, you know, some zooming in with scholars after hours where teachers, you know, give up their own personal time to go over, work with those scholars. It's pulling them when we have them during the school hours because sometimes students can't stay after school. I work, or I have, you know, other responsibilities. So, pulling and putting supports in place during the school day has been very, very advantageous. Our summer school program has really been a support for us. We offer ACT supports even in our summer school program. So, what you'll notice in summer schools, that we'll have students enrolled completing core course recovery, but we also have students enrolled in ACT prep, where we're working specifically with them on attaining the required ACT score to help them make it across the stage. And that has really proven, last year, I think, we had fifty-six scholars that ended up graduating just in summer school. So, it's those types of things and having really strong plans, written plans. And we require them to have written support plans that both the parents, the students, the graduation coaches, the counselors, and having a check-in, check-out person there at the school who's tracking and looking for them every single day.
And this is linked, I think they're linked. So, you talked about having the E-three program to enable our scholars to have plans for when they leave. So, we've got these grad plans in place, and everybody's checking on you and pulling you and cheering for you and pulling you across that stage. But then when you get out, those are, that's a written plan too, right? Like, they have to make...
Yes, they have to have an ISP that's monitored in major clarity.
Which stands for?
Individual Student Plan, Individual Success Plan. And so, the ISP talks about, you know, what courses I'll take even from seventh grade through twelfth grade. It also talks about what my career interests are. I've taken several career exploration activities, and I kind of know what areas I may be interested in. And so, what we do is we help them really zero in on, okay, so which one or two are you most interested in? And now, we have career coaches that are paid for by the state that can provide work-based learning opportunities, provide internships, so that students can get real, live exposure, practice, and experience before even going out into the workforce. And so, one of the goals of the career coaches now is, goals are, to now start tracking scholars as they exit. So, first year outside of high school, did they go into the field of interest in which they, you know, we track them for, are there additional supports? And so, we also have a college and career readiness manager, that's Ms. Williams, Jana Williams. And she does a lot of the outside tracking as well. How many of the students are in colleges? And so, we have meetings with our community colleges and our universities quarterly. And they're called our collegiate partnership meetings. And what we talk about is how well are the students in Jackson Public School doing in your schools? What supports are you seeing that they need that we can help, you know, prior to sending them to you? But also, we're going to share with you things that we've seen that works well for them prior to sending them to you. And so, oftentimes, that partnership has been really, really helpful in putting in extra supports for scholars that are in colleges that may be experiencing some issues.
Yes, I just want to applaud a lot of that work that's happening with grad coaches, with the career planning, all of those things. Because I have a lot of optimism that the more we help kids develop their life plan, we're going to see that dropout rate decrease. And, but I do want to highlight something that, I'm a numbers person, and I never want to get, I don't want this to get lost on sort of any of us, frankly, which is the decline in rate that we saw. It's not big, right? It's not a big, we can say it's, you know, point four percent. But the reality is, if you look at the number, if you apply those rate changes from last year to this year on, to the number of kids that we had in any given year, that's seven kids. And that's hard, and we should all take that seriously because that's seven kids who did not walk across, that under the new rate would not have walked across the stage last year. And we're trying to, we want to exceed the state standards. We want to exceed the numbers that we see statewide. And so, I know we're in this process of strategic planning. And like, that's something that we all need to be thinking about, is how do we get, how do we get those seven kids back? Right, so they're, and then how we add seven more and add seven more and all that, those little incremental steps. That is change, that's a life change for everyone we do it, so.
I appreciate that, and I'll just acknowledge that in most of the conversation I've had with internal team members, with parents, with scholars, most of the conversation I've had, and even with board members, this issue around how we support scholars in preparing for life and the looking forward, not just at today and instruction today and activities today, but looking forward, preparing them for what comes next, is a big kind of priority that I anticipate will continue to have momentum and will show up in whatever the next version of the plan, the strategic plan will be. I was going to also lift up something else that escapes me now, but additional... Oh, we've got lots of increased interest and accountability for engagement of our middle and elementary school team members. Because graduation doesn't, this is something I've learned more readily here. Graduation doesn't just happen in high school. It's about the readiness from those earlier divisions, the relationships, all those things that we do or don't do to prepare scholars for success as they get into high school and beyond. And so, that, as well as the efforts, and I know Mr. Figures has been more involved than most here with our community schools effort. And so, as we're thinking about what that means, what it currently means and could mean in the Lanier feeder pattern, and looking at ways to continue to bolster that and make it real and impactful long-term, not just of immediate needs, but long-term. It is certainly our hope that that too will be one way, one approach, one effort that helps us to increase those outcomes.
Thank you, Ms. Marsha Thomas. Next, we have the Information Action Item A, Ms. Marsha Thomas.
Stay awhile.
Yes. The administration is seeking to approve the job description for the principal of the Virtual High School Academy position. This incumbent will also supervise the middle college program located at Jackson State University. So, the goal of the program is to support scholars who may have dropped out of high school, scholars that may have life circumstances, that are looking for an alternative, that have other work responsibilities, maybe parents, health issues, students with severe anxiety, which we currently have. And so, having those, this as an option to support high school graduation, we think is integral.
Board members, are there questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Marsha Thomas. Is there a motion to approve Information Action Item A?
Motion.
Second.
It has been moved in second that we approve Information Item A. All in favor?
Aye.
No, are there any nays? No, there being none, the motion is carried. Okay, next, we have Information Item, Action Item B. And this is Ms. Woody.
Good evening to Vice President, and board members, and Dr. Green. Administration recommends the approval of the Memorandum of Understanding with the Mississippi Arts Commission and the Jackson Public School District to offer teaching artist services for Green Elementary School.
Thank you, Ms. Woody. Are there questions or comments from board members?
My only comment is that I'm very excited to see Green continue to grow this arts program, so.
Thank you. Are there others? Okay, is there a motion to approve this information?
No move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second that Information Item B be approved. All in favor?
Aye.
There being no nays, the motion is approved. Next, we have the Information Action Items C and D by Mr. Wilton Chuck Jackson.
Good evening, Vice President Hill, board members, Dr. Green, members of the JPS family. The Board of Administration recommends that the Board of Trustees approve the lease agreement between Jackson Public School District and Big River Energy LLC, located at the corner of Wilmington Street, I-20 Frontage Road, Jackson, Mississippi, identified as tax parcel two oh one dash eight nine and two oh one dash ninety.
Board members, thank you, Mr. Jackson. Are there any questions or comments from board members regarding this? Okay, is there a motion to approve? Okay, go to the second, okay.
Administration recommends that the Board of Trustees approve the lease agreement between Jackson Public School District and S&amp;S Apache Camping Center LLC, located at eighteen twenty University Boulevard, Jackson, Mississippi, identified as tax parcel two oh one dash eighty-seven, two oh one dash one thirty, and two oh one dash one thirty-two.
Board members, is there a motion to approve Actions C and D?
Motion.
Fair.
It's been moved in second that we approve Action Items C and D. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There being none, the motion is approved. Next, we have the Consent Agenda Items for Finance. All the Consent Agenda Items Finance have been reviewed by the Board previously, and we have had an opportunity to ask the administration questions. Are there any further questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Item Finance?
No move.
Second.
Been moved in second that we approve the Items, Consent Agenda Item Finance. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Uh, there are, there being no nays, the motion is approved. Next, we have Consent Agenda Items General. All the Consent Agenda Items General have been reviewed by the Board previously and we've had an opportunity to ask the administration questions. Are there any further questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items General?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Consent Agenda Items. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, there being no nays, the motion is approved. Next, we have the Consent Agenda Items Personnel. All of the Consent Agenda Items Personnel have been reviewed by the Board previously and we've had an opportunity to ask the administration questions. Are there any further questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Personnel?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, uh, all in favor? Of the motion?
Aye.
Okay, there being no nays, the motion is approved. Is there consideration to hold an executive session? Okay. Yes, there is, so we need a motion?
Uh, Madam, I move that, uh, we close this meeting and move to executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
There being no nays, the motion is approved. Thanks you, thanks to each of you and have a good night.